Tuesday, July 29, 2025, Douglas County, Nebraska. Please note again that a copy of Douglas County's act is located on the north wall of the legislative chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. All right. Before jumping into equalization, we're going to briefly go into the actual Board of Commissioners' agenda first for a special presentation, and then we'll recess back into equalization here momentarily. With that being said, I'll go into Board of Commissioners with a roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahey is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. All right, we're going to go into Section 5, which is our recognitions and proclamations. Today, we have one under Item A, which is our resolution recognizing Mayor John Ewing, Jr., for 18 years of exceptional service as Douglas County Treasurer in a lifetime of public leadership and community impact. So with that being said, the Board has prepared a resolution for our former county colleague and now Mayor of Omaha, John Ewing. And so I will get a motion and a second for that resolution. Motion by Borgeson, second by Morgan. And I'll briefly read it here, John, so you know the content of it, and then we'll give you a moment as well. So the resolution does read, whereas John Ewing, Jr., has honorably served Douglas County for 18 years as Treasurer, demonstrating unwavering integrity, fiscal responsibility, and dedication to public service. And whereas, under his leadership, the county's budget was balanced monthly to the penny, fiscal integrity was restored, and technology was implemented, such as online tax payments and phone options, to make services more accessible. And whereas, Treasurer Ewing collaborated with partners to launch online vehicle registration and payment services, improving efficiency and saving residents time and money. Whereas, his financial stewardship resulted in over $90 million in annual revenue through strategic investments, bank management, and commissions. And whereas, before his role, excuse me, before his role as Treasurer, Ewing served nearly 25 years in law enforcement, including as Deputy Police Chief of the Omaha Police Department, showing strong leadership and commitment to public safety. And whereas, he has been an active community leader, serving on more than 70 boards and committees, including Haptet for Humanity and Charles Drew Health Center, and championing diversity, mentorship, and youth empowerment. And whereas, John Ewing, Jr., a proud North Omaha native, graduate of Northwest High School and the University of Nebraska Omaha, and longtime public servant, made history on June 9, 2025, when he became Omaha's first elected black mayor and the city's 52nd mayor. And whereas, Douglas County Board of Commissioners extends its deep gratitude for his distinguished service and looks forward to continued partnership with the City of Omaha under his leadership. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board recognizes and honors Mayor John Ewing, Jr., for his 18 years of exceptional service as Douglas County Treasurer in a lifetime of public leadership and community impact. Signed, all seven Commissioners.
Wow. Thank you very much. I just wanted to come this morning and say thank you to all of you for the great partnership we had for 18 years. I love being a public servant, and I love working with people who put the people of this city and this county first. So thank you for the great partnership. I look forward to continuing that great partnership as the Mayor of Omaha, and certainly appreciate Patrick and all of the staff in the county as well, all the department heads who were great partners with us also. And then the countywide elected officials like County Clerk Dan Ash, appreciate them as well, and really, really proud of the work that the folks in the Douglas County Treasurer's Office did. I had most of the senior leadership during that time stay with me from the moment I walked in the door until the day I retired. And so I'm very proud of the team we built and the work that we were able to do to serve the people of this community. So thank you all for the resolution and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Ewing, and honorable mention to Dr. Viv Ewing as well, First Lady of Omaha. And if you all don't mind, we might get a picture. Viv, did you have a couple of words with?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for recognizing John W. Ewing, Jr. It certainly is a proud moment.
Definitely. Thank you so much. Quick picture. All right. We will, I'll take a motion to recess Commissioners briefly to go back into equalization. Oh, we have, oh, we will vote on the resolution and then take that recess. Yep.
Motion passes 6 to 0. And Mr. Chair, if I may, I was still getting situated. Who made the motion and second on that?
On the
The motion, Mr. Ewing, yeah.
Borgeson motioned and Morgan seconded.
Thank you very much.
All right. And Commissioner Rogers was giving me a motion to recess Commissioners and go back into equalization. Is there a second for that? Second by Borgeson.
I'll do a voice vote on the recess. Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. We're voting to recess, so we'll count those as yeses. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to recess passes 6 to 0.
All right. We'll go into Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahey is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes, here. First item of business are Items A and B. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 22, 2025, and B being called for a meeting as set Tuesday, August 5, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan to approve A and B. Let's vote.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, which are C through S on equalization, which we can take and block plus adjournment if desired. Motion by Rogers. Second by Morgan. Is there any discussion? Anybody from the public come here to talk about any of the resolutions on equalization? If not, anybody from the Board? Commissioner Morgan.
I stand to be corrected by Catherine Hall on this matter, but August 5, we will be meeting as the Board of Equalization. And as you know, there are approximately, I think, Mr. Ish, about 4,800 people that saw the referees this year. And we have that process, and then we're now starting to see the notices sent out concerning what the referees made the decision of. And for those that might not be satisfied with what took place, they have a chance to come before the Board of Equalization, which is the seven members of the county board. And listen, we listen to what that citizen might tell us about what took place and why they didn't get the consideration they thought they should have gotten. And that's what we do here on August 5. So any citizen can be here that day, and that's the only time that we'll be available. So I wanted the citizens to know we'd start at 9:00, approximately, with the Board of Equalization, I think shortly thereafter.
Yes.
So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, anybody else on the resolutions? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
All right. That adjourns equalization. We'll go back into Commissioners' agenda. Do we need another roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. I'll just do a Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahey is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are under Section 1, A and B. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July 22, 2025. B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 29, 2025. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, Items A through K. Do we have a motion and second for discussion? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Couple of items for the record, Mr. Chairman. On Item C, acceptance of the revised Douglas County Grant Manual. We've been having discussions on this. It's a significant portion of the revenue that Douglas County administers. And I was just wondering if somebody could speak to this for the public who are not here and able to see the backup documents.
Hi, Commissioner Lisa Dobbin, Douglas County Grant Coordinator. And what's your question?
Lisa, thanks for coming in. The Douglas County Grant Manual, could you just describe in brief what that exactly is?
Yeah, so the Douglas County Grant Manual was created in
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? The Douglas County Grant Manual was created in 2020 with the county. It has state regulations, federal regulations, and county regulations. So it just ensures that we're in compliance. So if we have any audits, we can pass those successfully, and we update those as regulations change.
Thank you. I have particular interest in this. I was the first grant writer for the City of Omaha way back when, before you were born. And it's good to see that we've come a long, long way in terms of best practices and compliance. That's what this is all about, right?
Correct.
Great. Thanks for this.
Okay. Thanks.
I have one more.
Okay.
On the next Item D, banium agreement with Douglas County, Nebraska, on behalf of the Adult Drug Court in Nebraska Administrative Offices of the Court in Probation. And I see that maybe Sherri Larson is here from the courts. This is something that we're kind of proud of having initiated and supported. And Sherri, if you could just give us an outline of what this does and what the drug court in general does.
Okay. Sherri Larson, District Court Administrator. We have had this agreement with the AOC Administrative Office of Courts of Probation since 2008, and it reimburses the county $400,000 annually for our staffing at the Adult Drug Court. The Drug Court allows people to come into the program. They have to say that yet or admit to what they've done. And if they go through the program and are successful, then those felonies are taken off of their record. And I wish I had been better prepared for this meeting to let you know how many graduates we've had, but I believe it's over 2,000.
That's great news. And this is all part of, you know, kind of an ongoing service that Douglas County tries to provide for people who are struggling with substance abuse issues. You heard just before we talked about this from the detox folks, that we provide services for hundreds of folks. This is an adjunct to that, trying to keep people who have an illness of substance abuse out of the criminal justice system and maybe get them well so that they don't come back.
Yes.
And you folks do a great job of helping us with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
While you're voting, Mr. Chair, just wanted to notate on F3. And this came up in the Board of Trustees meeting. There's just a change, one of the signature pages on F3.
Okay. We'll correct that.
Motion passes 6 to 3, or 6 to 0.
Thank you. We'll move on on our agenda here. We already finished the proclamation recognitions today, so we'll move on to Section 6. We have one presentation from our partners at OPPD for an annual update.
Good morning. Thank you for having us this morning. I'm Chris Meeks. I'm a government and community relations strategist with the Omaha Public Power District. Our address is 444 South 16th Street Mall in Omaha. And I'd like to start by introducing some of my colleagues that are here with me today that come from OPPD, and we're kind of the faces and the recognition that are here to help you. So I'll start with the Vice President of Customer Service and Public Affairs, Tim McCoravy. We have a Senior Account Manager, Laura Strode, and Government and Community Relations Manager, Michaela Valentine. Not with us today, Brooke Aiken, who is our Director of Economic Development and External Relations, and Dustin Marvel, who is also a Government and Community Relations Manager with the local GA team. So as you know, the local GA team, we're really your representatives at OPPD to, and we're willing to help with any questions that you may have or make kind of that first point of contact for you. Laura works really closely with kind of the operations side of Douglas County as the account manager. So if there are any new construction projects or anything that you're working on or any power quality issues, Laura's the one that is there to help you. And here are the pictures of the team that we have here. So I'll start this morning, this morning's updates with some good news. We are proud to introduce Turtle Creek Station as OPPD's newest power plant. It's been online for right about a month now, and it's a huge accomplishment for the year. It's a major resource for OPPD and supplying more power for the growing economy of the metro area. Turtle Creek Station is a peaking station. It has the ability to turn on and run at full strength in about 11 minutes. So one of the importance of this plant is that it provides the power right when we need it. This is the first combustion turbine of this size that has come online in the Southwest Power Pool since 2017, so is a big accomplishment for OPPD and for the region as a whole. Turtle Creek Station's two combustion turbines generate 450 megawatts of energy. And again, it is a, it's a very important resource for OPPD's fleets. And in addition to these two brand-new units that we have, we have a third unit that's a third combustion turbine that is, construction is already underway. They're moving dirt out there right now. So we're excited to get that new turbine online as well. In addition to Turtle Creek Station, we have Standing Bear Lake Station, which is another generating source of for OPPD, and it's located here in Douglas County. It's currently undergoing final testing and tuning, and we expect it to achieve substantial completion here very shortly. We also have the North Douglas County Transmission Project that is nearing the start of construction. We have hearings for the Eastman acquisitions that are going to be underway for Segments 2 and 3. That's scheduled for next week, August 5. So this is another piece of infrastructure that's really important for OPPD in the terms of increasing transmission capacity and really providing more reliable power for the whole region. More electrons on the grid is a huge undertaking for OPPD and any power provider, and OPPD is dedicated to growing that economy and that power supply. So in addition to Turtle Creek Station and Standing Bear Lake Station, we also have construction underway at Cass County Station. So currently, that site houses two combustion turbines, and they're adding three more with an anticipated completion date in 2030. We also, for right about a year, it's been online, but we have the Platt View Solar Array in Saunders County, so we're really glad to have that resource in our fleet as well. Along with our, increasing our generating capacity, a huge undertaking for OPPD that's going to take the next few years is our AMI and smart meter program. It's a huge technological step for OPPD and for the company. So our current power meters that we have installed on everybody's house in Douglas County and the service territory as a whole are nearing the end of their expected life, and we're going to replace them with these smart meters. So just kind of the high-level overview, I know Commissioner Borgeson, you were in our virtual meeting last week. Great to see your name on the list there. So you got the 45-minute presentation from Matt Hardbeck. He did a great job doing some of the local leader outreach. I'm going to hit it much quicker today, so I'm going to miss some things. But if there is any highlights, you can feel free to let me know if I can hit on it. So currently, OPPD has meter readers that drive around, and there's a grid. It kind of doesn't hit every street in the service territory, but there's a vehicle with some mounted equipment that actually picks up that signal from the meters that are attached to your house. The new smart meters that we're going to install support two-way communication with OPPD. So what that means is they're, and in the metro area, it's going to pick up those signals via a field area network, which is basically a mesh network of routers and gateways that will pick up that signal coming out of the meter that it sends out and send it directly to OPPD. So it'll send out usage data every four hours for residential meters. But really, the biggest advantage of that is if there's an outage for any reason, it has what's called a last breath signal, and it'll send out that notification to us that I'm out immediately. So we'll find out if there are any unexpected outages or small areas that go out without power, and customers won't be required to call into our customer service line anymore. In the rural areas, which there are not many in Douglas County, but that same signal is going to come through cellular networks. So it's more a mesh kind of a grid with the infrastructure in the metro areas and then through the cellular towers in the rural areas. So the replacements of some of these meters will begin in the fall with a soft launch of approximately 10,000 meters, some of which are located in Douglas County and the City of Omaha. Customers in these soft launch areas, they'll see correspondence from us 90, 60, and 30 days out from the install date. And if we can't get ahold of them via email, if we see that it's either we don't have an email address on file or it's not getting to their inbox, we'll send a direct mailer, so they will get a physical letter in the mail. The replacement of the meters really is generally straightforward process. The old meter on the picture is the picture on the left. We're going to, we'll pull that away from the meter sockets and replace it with the new smart meter, which is on the right. So barring any unexpected issues, it's about a 10-minute, 10-15-minute process to replace those meters, do a quick inspection, and get the new ones stuck, installed. However, that quick install is going to be a vast technological improvement. To mention just a few things, I hit on the two-way communication with OPPD. And really, part of what that's going to allow is, one, it's going to support a new and improved customer platform with new and expanded information options for our customers, a new outage map, a new mobile app for your phones, and a new and vastly improved streetlight outage reporting tool. These are just a few highlights that customers are going to see once these new meters are installed. And even some of these, this new equipment or technology is going to be available to customers even before the new smart meters hits their houses. It is a long rollout for this. It'll be multiple years for some of the customers, but they'll have some of these new tools in much short order. So the soft launch areas, again, 10,000 meters, and this area is really strategically chosen for a number of factors. There's urban areas that we have, there's suburban areas, and really, the goal of some of these areas is to test the processes that we have and the technology that we're installing. So the examples of some of the rural areas that are going to use cellphone network, we strategically chose those locations because we know that cellphone coverage can be a little spotty in those areas. We want to make sure we get those, the signals. There's some apartment buildings that have the meter room. It's down in a locked basement door with poor signal as well. So we want to make sure that we can install all those and get the, get the signals to OPPD. So when it comes to the actual installation dates in the soft launch areas and the full deployment, when we get to that point, customers should watch for one of our partners, Allegiant is the name of that company. They're going to be the actual installer for these vendors. OPPD is going to do the commercial buildings, and then Allegiant will do the residential. So Allegiant, when they do go house to house, they're going to have identification that's going to show them as OPPD's contractors, as well as a magnet on their vehicle. So when you see that car pull up or the truck pull up in front of your house, you know it's going to be a trusted OPPD vendor. While I'm here, I'm also going to plug our Local Government Affairs newsletter. We do hope you all are receiving this, and we use this as a communication tool from the Local Government Affairs team, just to send some, a couple of important stories, you know, at the end of each month to you and to communicate. So smart meter updates, things like that are going to be included in this newsletter. So we do hope at the end of the month you do take a little bit of time just to browse through that and see if anything catches your eye. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank you for making that presentation on the smart meters available virtually, because I wasn't able to make the in-person one, so I appreciate that. And you did a great job in 45 seconds explaining the 45-minute presentation. One question I did have on it, though, is how is the changes, how are the changes in the BEED program where they're reducing the high fiber optic cable to a lesser cable in rural areas especially, going to affect that smart meter?
Yes. I don't believe it's going to have any impact on it. So the new, the smart meters, they communicate via the cellular network, so it's AT&amp;T, it's Verizon. And the contract that we have on that, it's a separate company that OPPD is working with and connecting to those. It actually has the ability to connect to whichever network has the best signal at that time. So it's not going to be a, in the rural areas, it's not going to be a special burden on any one particular carrier or any one particular antenna.
You might want to just take a look at that because they're, you know, You might want to just take a look at that, because there, you know, there are many areas within Douglas County, believe it or not, that don't have that high signal area, and the whole purpose of the BEED project was to bring everybody up, even in the rural areas especially, to be able to get that, that quality. And it is even the cellular folks that are impacted by this, so instead of having to provide the highest, they had, they're going to the next level, which I think will affect our rural areas and actually all areas in Douglas County now that we're not going to the highest level, which makes no sense to me, but anyway, I'm, with these smart meters, I'm just wondering how that's going to affect, so I just bring that to the attention when, when I watched the presentation and then what you were just talking about, so.
Certainly, yeah, that is a great call-out. I'll certainly, we'll check with our meter teams, I am, you know, I am not the, the full meter expert within OPPD, we have a great team that's really been working tirelessly to, to work on these, so we'll double-check on that, and we'll get, I, I will follow-up on that one.
Okay, great. I just know there's areas in Waterloo where it's still a problem, believe it or not, for them to get internet access, and with, we were looking forward to being able to, for them to have the same that other areas of the county were having, and now that's not the case, so anyway, I, I worry about the smart meters as well in those areas, but, and then, do you guys bury cable at all in, especially in new subdivisions?
As far as underground power lines?
Yeah.
We do.
You do?
Yep.
Is there a reason why we don't do more of that? Is it more costly? Is it access? Is it?
Yeah, there's, there are a number of factors going to be associated with that, so, you know, is generally going to be, you know, that initial construction cost is going to be more costly for the buried lines, and for, you know, if it's a new subdivision where grass isn't established and we don't have landscaping, maybe we don't have sprinklers in the ground yet, you know, there is less, less disruption to the individual property owners for that, but really, it's a, you know, collaboration's going to work with, OPPD is going to work with the developer as well when we're installing those, those, those power lines in the new subdivisions.
I always assumed, and you weren't supposed to assume, but I always assumed it was because it was more costly that we didn't do it here, but in other areas, you know, when you're driving through the communities, there's no power lines, they're all underground, and so I always wondered why we didn't do that, but.
And you will notice, you know, a lot of those newer subdivisions, you know, generally speaking, they're going to, more likely to have those underground lines when they're built, you know, for the, for the benefits, for the, you know, the number of factors there.
Right.
Once, once you have an established area that has above-ground power lines, it's burying.
It's very hard.
It's very difficult and very costly at that time.
Yeah, well, thank you for being here in the update, appreciate you.
Very well.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh and then Morgan.
Thank you. Thanks for this excellent report, very informative, and we appreciate the valuable collaboration that we have with the Omaha Public Power District. You're a great partner, and I want to give a special shout-out to Michaela Valentine, who I've known for many, many years and has done a, a great job all the way from the Nebraska Legislature to our local public power district. Michaela, welcome. I want to also commend OPPD, this is a few years ago, for the, the way you stepped forward during the COVID pandemic. We did a utilities relief program in close cooperation with you folks, and it couldn't have gone better. It served a vital need for people in our community who were struggling to pay bills when COVID was rampaging. And I, I really want to thank everybody, and Michaela, you were a point person on this, for the way that you stepped up and helped people keep the, the lights and the heat and all that good stuff on. I have a quick question for you, and thanks for the informative PowerPoint. The new plants coming on are, are they natural gas generating?
They, they are, yes. Standing Bear Lake and, and Turtle Creek Station, as well as the expansion at Cass County Station, their primary fuel is natural gas, but they are, they're what we call dual fuel, so they have the ability to run on fuel oil if natural gas is, is not available.
So I know that you've made strides, and I just wanted to get it in the record, if we could, to transitioning to renewable generation sources. And could you tell me if you did a quick, simple pie graph of the generation sources for electricity that OPPD provides? What percentage of that currently is renewable?
I'm going to peek at my team if they have good numbers. I don't know that we have, that I have, you know, a good percentage for each different source, and really, it does kind of vary from day to day. But it is important for OPPD to have a varied generation fleet. We want a little bit of everything, so, you know, we have some of that baseload coal generation, the Nebraska City Power stations that they, that, you know, they run a lot of the time and they provide a good, the, the initial, the, the power that we know we need. The peaking stations are a great addition as well, where they, if the wind's not blowing and the, and the sun is, you know, it's a cloudy day, you know, we have the ability to turn those on, or especially during this heat wave.
Sure.
But we're, we're constantly, you know, watching for, evaluating the renewable sources as well. So again, we have the Platt View Solar Array that is online. We also announced a couple of wind purchase power agreements at the end of 2024, and we have a new power purchase power agreement for, for, for solar as well, it's under construction. More to come on that. So we're constantly watching that, and really, it's, it's where we can get the, those purchase power agreements with the best price for, with each developer.
I think the OPPD, OPPD Board has set goals for like transition to, is it a certain percentage or 100% of renewable by, by maybe mid-century?
It was a, it was a megawatt goal, I believe. And then, thank you, Tim, yes, the net zero carbon emission by 2050.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What is it?
The net zero carbon emission goal by 2050.
Oh, yeah. By when?
2050.
Okay. Do we know where we are on that scenario today?
I'm going to peek at the team again. Yeah, Tim, would you like to come on?
Don't go away. My name's Tim McRavie, I'm Vice President of Customer Service and Public Affairs for OPPD, and proud to work with Chris, and I'll try to supplement a little bit. Our primary sustainability goal that the Board has set for us is a net zero by 2050, so in that, we do not have specific year-by-year trajectories to, to get there, because we know that's going to be so much dependent upon the load, the electric load that we're asked to serve to power the economy of the region, available technologies, prices of those technologies, when I say technologies, generating technologies like gas, nuclear, et cetera. So we don't have a specific year-by-year goal. We are on a good path of having reduced significant emissions since the 2013 baseline, so we're proud of that, we'll continue to do that. And the additions that we're adding that Chris spoke about, we talk about Turtle Creek and Standing Bear, they're key components of dispatchable natural gas generation. We've also added hundreds of megawatts of renewable resources to the portfolio as well, which, as Javier Fernandez, our CEO, would say, the technology that we're in favor of right now is electrons, right? It's whatever we can get that generates it at a right cost to power the growth we're experiencing. Hopefully, that helps.
No, I appreciate that. You know, with a 2050 net zero goal, you've got 25 years to go, I know that you've made progress in diversifying the generation of electricity to renewables and natural gas and other things. I was just kind of wondering where we are today, because we've got a ways to go and, and, you know, if you get any information on that, I'd be very, very interested in that. Also, Douglas County has a fairly significant real estate footprint, and we've tried to reduce our carbon footprint as well, so for instance, our recently redone campus at 156 and Maple, we put in 200 geothermal wells to take us off of the grid almost entirely for that building. The same at the Health Center, and I know that the Power District at one time might have had something for residential geothermal, I don't know if that still exists, but is that a program that you're looking at or that you currently have?
We have had such a program, I'll defer to Chris, I should know if that's still active, I'm not totally certain, so I won't speak with definitiveness here. What we found on the residential side is that there was a pretty, pretty modest, pretty slow uptake on that, just because of the expense to retrofit a, a field, you know, in somebody's yard, et cetera, so I don't know if that program is still active. We do tend, we have a team that, that works in my group that consistently looks at products and programs and services that'll help customers meet their energy needs, be that added reliability or lower cost, or maybe they have sustainability goals, and will constantly tweak our programs, both in their existence and, and how robust they are and how big they are based on customer demand.
So, you know, we're always dealing with some capital construction or something, and we'd be interested in working with the Power District to make sure that we make those as carbon-neutral as possible. As you indicated, there's always new technology coming on, I've seen solar panels on the roof of houses and buildings, and I don't think we could get a wind generator down here, but if we could collaborate with you more closely, is there a specific department or entity within the district that deals with transition to renewable sources?
There's a specific person for Douglas County, and it's Miss Grove, so Laura is the account manager that works with Douglas County, she would be the primary point of contact, she has a team of people behind her that she can draw upon with specific expertise to help explore the goals, both of energy, reliability, sustainability, and help inform and design solutions for the county.
That's great, and I, I always enjoy working with Michaela, and I'll certainly follow-up, she does an excellent job for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
Chris, just want to thank you and staff here with you and your team, and I know it's been a little bit of a challenging year with wind, and I know they're forecasting 80% chance this evening too, so we thank you for your work, and I appreciate that you do come here, and as you know, this is on TV so that we can get information out to the citizens, so whenever there is, or are some things that you want to express, we sure welcome you to be here. And again, thank you OPPD for the excellent service you've given for so many years, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Morgan, this is the, the one-year anniversary of the largest outage, outage in OPPD's history, the windstorm last summer, so.
Wow.
It's, it has been quite a, quite a year for, for outages and storms in the, in the district.
Anybody else on the OPPD presentation? If not, we'll conclude. Thank you so much for coming today, appreciate everyone for stopping by. Thank you. All right, we'll move forward on our agenda here under Committees, Section 8, under Finance, we have just Budget Report as presented. Quick side note, that the, the actual budget conversation for the 2526 fiscal year will occur as a separate meeting immediately following Commissioners today, so just shortly here, but it's going to be technically separate. Aside from Finance Committee, we also have Human Resources Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented as well. We have a very quick legal advice executive session item that shouldn't last more than five minutes or so, and then we'll come back and start the budget meeting, so we'll try to make that as quick as possible, as we know there's people in the audience waiting for that segment. So with that being said, do I have a motion second ago in executive session?
So move.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers, and we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
The Board will now go into executive session for the purpose of legal advice, and we'll come back and start the budget meeting here very shortly. All right. So motion to reconvene. Is that what you're stating, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Well, motion to reconvene and adjourn this meeting, and then we'll, the budget meeting's actually a separate meeting. So we need to reconvene and adjourn this current meeting.
Motion reconvene by anybody?
So moved.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Morgan to reconvene. Vote on that.
Reconvene and adjourn?
Oh, reconvene and adjourn. Yep.
Okay. One, sorry, commissioners, one second. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rogers, Kavanaugh, Morgan.
[chuckle]
All right. Motion passes six to zero.
All right. That concludes Board of Commissioners. Now, we're going to jump into a separate Board of Commissioners meeting, which is specifically for a budget hearing, budget meeting for Tuesday, July 29, 2025. Again, please note that a copy of Open Meetings Act is located on the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber. And we'll go into our agenda for this budget meeting, which we just have one item. Roll call first.
Yep. Commissioner, Commissioner, we're doing the
Roll call first.
Roll call, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahey's absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. What is your question, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Looking at the printed agenda here, and where we had the public hearing on the budget hearing in Roman numeral seven, then we have on the screen the finance budget report, human resources, weekly personnel report, recess to executive session, reconvene and adjourn, and then it says budget meeting. But I don't see that on the printed agenda. Am I missing something?
It's a separate.
Oh, it's an add-on page. Was that published?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have that with the agenda that I picked up here.
Yeah, there's only one item on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Item A, budget hearing and adoption of requested fiscal year 2526 Douglas County budgets. We do have Lori Persch here, our finance director, who will give a brief presentation, and then we can go into dialogue.
There we go. Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Lori Persch, Budget and Finance Director. I'm here today to go through the proposed budget for Douglas County of $637 million or $584 million excluding ARPA. That is the proposed budget for 2526. And then just for, I know you all know what ARPA is, but I will be just a quick explanation. That was a one-time award given to the county related back to COVID. Those dollars have already all been obligated as of 12/31 of 2024. So mostly, we will be talking about the budget net of those ARPA dollars. So to start with, we'll start with a discussion of the tax levy. Over the last 10 years, there has been only one increase in the levy, and that was in fiscal 2020. That was a penny and a half increase, very specific for the justice tower across the street. We kept it at that level for four years, and then the board elected to reduce it in 2024 by a half penny. And that is where it has been the last two years. You'll see the column on the far right is in blue because that is tentative. The actual final levy will be set in September, but this budget is built on the assumption Uh, you'll see the column on the far right is in blue because that is tentative. The actual, uh, final levy will be set in, uh, September, but this budget is built on the assumption that that levy will not, uh, move from where it is, will not increase, will not decrease. So, whenever we're talking about the Douglas County budget, um, being that it is primarily supported through property tax dollars, I think it's important to show what portion of the average, uh, person's property tax dollars are actually going to support, uh, the county and all of the things that, that we provide. So, this is a snapshot of somebody that lives in Douglas County within the city of Omaha, within Omaha public, public schools. It would look very similar for, if it was somebody within, um, Millard Public Schools or District 66 or something like that. The upshot of this is that of the average person's property taxes, only 13% goes to support all of the things that the county provides. So, 9-1-1, Sheriff, the County Attorney, the Public Defender, I mean, you know, we have the whole litany of, of services that we provide, and that is literally only 13% of the average individual's property tax, um, bill. So, if we really want to make an impact on, um, property taxes, you know, the, this is gonna be more, probably more at the state level, but they've gotta look at a different funding mechanism for the schools, because that's 55% of, of what we're talking about here. And then the other piece would be the city of Omaha. Can they look at maybe reallocating, you know, a portion of theirs away from property tax support? I'm not saying our 13% isn't, uh, very, i- it's obviously relevant. You're all very fiscally conservative, I'm fiscally conservative. Nobody wants any increase in property taxes. I'm just saying we can be super, super conservative, we're not gonna move the needle as dramatically as if they made some changes within, uh, the way that we fund schools. Okay, so a little summary of the, a proposed budget for '25, '26. Uh, by statute, we are required to have a separate budget hearing. Um, I think it's, as of last year, knew that it had to be listed separately on the agenda as a separate meeting, so it wouldn't kinda get buried. Um, so that is what we're doing right now. Uh, in summary, the budget assumes no increase in the tax levy on assessed property values. It assumes a 5.8% increase in total county assessed property values, net of anticipated Board of Equalization protests. So, I spoke with, um, the assessor's office earlier, and we kinda got an estimate of where they think valuations are gonna come in at. We always have to take a haircut off of that for the BOE protests, so we built in a 5.8% increase. So, the total budget of $636.6 million, or if you exclude the $52.2 million of remaining ARPA funding, the total budget of $584.4 million is only 2.2% over last year's final modified budget, excluding ARPA of $571.5 million. So, I think 2.2 is very reasonable year-over-year growth, um, in this current environment. So, that total in budget includes, of course, the general fund, um, and that's the piece that people really wanna talk about, that's our operations, and that is the piece that's property tax, largely property tax dependent. Um, there's, of course, other parts of that budget, so there's $76 million that relates to roads and, uh, another $3 million that relates to bridges, tho- those are highway allocation funds. There's, uh, $5.2 million in there that's tourism, that comes from the hotel motel tax. But the part we're gonna focus here is on, uh, the general fund. Sorry, I didn't realize that black bar is covering part of my screen here. Do you know how to move that? So, the general fund budget is $348.1 million. If you exclude the $52.2 million of ARPA funding, then the total for, uh, proposed for '25, '26 is $295.9 million, which is 3.5% above the prior year's final modified budget, excluding ARPA of $286 million. So, we set the budget parameters, we try to keep things at 3%. You know, there's always, uh, maybe labor contracts that might exceed that, there might be some capital costs that, you know, um, things that we need to do some catch-up on. So, to end up at 3.5%, I think is fairly reasonable. The U.S. Joint Economic Committee website, their core CPI inflation index for Nebraska, so very specific, I'm not just saying, um, you know, across the U.S., so for Nebraska, the most recent month was 3.9% and the prior month was 4%. So, coming in below that at 3.5%, I think, uh, seems pretty, pretty reasonable. Now, for, um, Kim, this isn't popping up to my other, how do I get it to, show me at the bottom so I can pop up to the other one real quick? I just hit escape? Well, I can just have Follow their books, maybe that's fine. Okay. Sorry. So, in your, um, I'll, these next couple of slides aren't in, um, they're in your books, they aren't in my slide deck here, um, because I was following the, the slide deck that, uh, I've done the last couple of years that I, um, inherited from the previous Finance Director, that didn't have a ton of the detail. But I, per request from, um, Commissioner Kavanaugh, he wanted to walk through a little bit of the details. So, if you go to, I think it's page four, it talks about the, uh, operations supported by property tax, and you can see at the top there, there's the general fund, uh, $348 million, and then if you exclude the ARPA, we're $295.9 million. And then it lists some others, so Community Service Health Center, CMHC, et cetera, the Health Department, that are also partially supported by, uh, property taxes. The general fund is the bulk of it, most of the general fund is, is almost exclusively property tax, there are, of course, some grants and whatnot in there. But when you look at the items below that are also operations supported by property tax, you need to keep in mind that a lot of those have other revenues coming in. So, for example, the Health Center has a, uh, budget of $48 million. They also have $35.5 million coming in, um, in receipts from Medicare, Medicaid, private pay. So, they are not being funded by property taxes to the tune of $48 million, it's, it's more along the lines of 12.5. You know, same with CMHC, their budget's $23 million. They have receipts of $11.1 million that we anticipate coming in. So, they're, we're, so property tax is supporting a portion of that $11.9 million. Same with the Health Department, $23.3 million. They have anticipated receipts of $18.3 million. So, really, the property tax portion that's being supported by that is, is $5 million. So, in total, uh, the operations supported by property tax, net of the ARPA, is, uh, $416 million. If you go to the next page in your, uh, books, and this is also posted on the website, so, um, you two can follow along as well, um, the, it shows the other funds. So, we talked earlier about road and bridge and those being highway allocation funds, not property taxes, the tourism, that's the hotel motel tax, uh, of $5.2 million. All the way down, so the total budget of $636.6 million or excluding ARPA, $584 million. And then if you turn to the next page, page five, it goes through department by department in, uh, excruciating detail, the general fund. So, you can kind of see, you know, the increases year-over-year. A lot of, you know, Register of Deeds, 1.5%, 9-1-1, 1.5%, County Attorney, 3.3%. There's a couple that are coming in significantly over, and those are the ones that came in and said, hey, we need over-target, uh, requests. We are not going to be able to meet the target budget, uh, this year, and they came in to talk to the Board and explain why. So, um, that's those two pages. Now, we will move on to, um, the key revenue drivers. So, in setting this, uh, fiscal year '25, '26 budget, sorry, somebody's forgetting to pick up my daughter from school right now, from dancing, sorry about that. The, um, property tax revenues are, they're coming in as expected, if we take the assessed values times the levy rate that we don't anticipate changing. Um, the departmental receipts are also, for the most part, coming in as expected. There are a few a little higher or a little lower than anticipated. Um, there is one piece that is, kinda have a little bit of a material impact, and that was that, uh, when we got the revenue projections from the Treasurer's Office, the interest income is expected to be quite a bit lower this year due to anticipated decreases, um, when, in interest rates, when the Fed, uh, sets those rates. I, I think I just was looking earlier, um, the consensus is that that first drop is probably gonna occur in September, so fairly early on into the budget year. So, year-over-year, um, the net decrease in general fund revenues was about $2.5 million. So, the result is that even if all of the departments came in at target, these, this revenue decrease created a small deficit in our budget, uh, just shy of, uh, a half million dollars, which is hard to call that small, but on a budget of $636 million is, you know, not even a half of a percent or something. Uh, so, that could have been managed. However, of course, there were several departments that had, uh, that were not, that said, hey, we cannot make our target. And the target, which I'll get back to in, uh, in the next slide, but I'll, I'll reiterate it right here, the targets are, we try to shoot for about 3%. 3% for salaries, 1.5% for all else. So, it's pretty strict, pretty conservative. We, we really try to keep spending in check, given that these are taxpayer dollars. Uh, so, these several departments came in, they all had to give their presentations to the Board and, and present their reasons for being over-target. Unfortunately, because of where, um, you know, valuations and no willingness to move the levy up and things like that, and where interest rates are expected to decline, um, we did not have the funds to grant all of these departments their full over-target requests. So, um, I'll, in the next page, I'll talk a little bit about which, uh, departments got some over-target requests. But the net effect was in order to generate a balanced budget for this year, we had to pull in approximately $3.2 million from our general fund reserves. Okay, so, these are the departments that are getting more than target. This is not the full exhaustive list of everyone that came before the Board and said, we need, uh, we cannot hit our target. In total, the actual amount requested over-target was $7.2 million. Uh, we obviously did not have $7.2 million, and no one was willing to dig into the reserves, thankfully, um, we're being more
Lori, just as a correction, it's, uh, the proposal from the Finance Committee.
Oh, Finance Committee, yes.
Just the terminology, uh, it's not exactly finalized, but
Okay.
This is what's being submitted.
This is what's being submitted, thank you. Correct me on that one. Um, so, it was $7.2 million, um, this was the recommendations from the Finance Committee, uh, in total, granting these folks that had over-target requests about $2 million of that $7.2. So, the Sheriff had originally come in, uh, seeking $730,000. The Finance Committee recommendation is $252,152. They looked through the list of requests, uh, in the Sheriff's Budget, that was, that should support two deputies, and I think it was a couple of other things they had requested, a part-time civilian crime analyst and a part-time administrative coordinator. Of course, elected officials can use their dollars as they, you know, see fit, but that is what the Board was trying to help them, uh, meet those needs. Public defender had originally asked for $255,000. They were looking for, to hire two new public defenders due to their caseload, and one new trial assistant and one new investigator. Um, they were only given $160,000, so, um, they will have to decide if that's just the two public defenders, one attorney and one, uh, trial assistant, you know, we'll have to, that's up to them. Corrections, had asked for $2.2 million, they got $714,000. That was a contractual increase that occurs in September in the inmate medical contract, so there was really no way around that one. Emergency management had asked for $403,000, they got $135,000. Uh, I think that was for a new staff member. District Court and County Court, uh, District Court, they had, they are getting $541,000. That is, they have, the state has appointed, um, two new judges, just given our caseload, and we have to give those judges courtrooms, and so District Court is, uh, building out those two courtrooms. In addition, there is, uh, an increase in attorney fees. That's also, uh, the increase for the County Court, is those attorney fees. Community menrol, men, uh, general assistants had asked for $288,000. Um, that is literally all for direct assistance, so nothing was administrative in their request. Um, unfortunately, we don't have $288,000, so we gave them $100,000 over-target. So, in total, uh, again, $2 million over-target. Hence why our, our general fund ends up being, uh, not quite at the 3% that we'd hoped, but the 3.5. So, here's the sources of revenue in a pie chart version. You can see that the largest portion by far is, of course, the property tax, which is almost 50%. Uh, the only other piece that's double-digit is, uh, 22% from the general fund, uh, departmental revenues. Um, in addition, you can also see there are material amounts being contributed, revenues from the Health Center of $35.5 million, as we discussed earlier, uh, from, uh, CMHC of $11.2 million, et cetera, et cetera. But the upshot of this picture is that a lot of governments have, um, other things they can rely on, other taxes besides property tax. They have sales tax, they have income tax. We do not. We have property tax. We also have a small inheritance tax that is on the chopping block every year, so we try to not rely on that, um, as a sole source for the necessary things, um, but as a supplemental revenue source, um, just because that bill comes up every single year in the legislature to get that one eliminated. And again, that's only, um, just a fraction compared to the property taxes. So, here is a discuss, a slide showing our transfers in this budget. It includes, um, so funds coming in from the inheritance tax. We budgeted that to be about, uh, $18 million in revenues for '25, '26. If you look at the last five years, it was as low as $15 million in fiscal year '21, and as high as $26.5 million in fiscal year '23. I think on your slide here, it shows $17.8 million, that was the estimate as of June 13th. When I looked, uh, yesterday, the actual came in at about $18.4 million. So, I think our, um, estimate of revenues collected in '25, '26 of $18 million seems pretty much on the mark. I mean, that one's a hard one to, uh, predict, of course, for obvious reasons. Um, we have expenditures of $20.6, dis- disbursements of $20.6 slated to go out of that. And then we also have the lottery keynote funds that come in, and those go out as well, our transfers out of, of that fund. You will note that, um, for '24, '25, things came in a little bit higher, like to the tune of $2 million versus prior years where it was, you know, $500,000-ish, or a little below, a little above, a little below. And that is because this year we started receiving racing and gaming revenue in addition to the keynote revenue. So, this final slide just shows the valuations over the last 25 years. You can see that there's a lot of variation there. And, uh, you know, there was a five-year period from 20, fiscal 2011 through 2015 where, uh, the year-over-year valuation increases didn't even hit 2%. They were zero in some years. So, um, you know, that makes for challenging budget years. Obviously, the last two years, especially two years ago, we had increases of 12.2%. And even last year where we had increases of 7.5%, you know, we were able to meet most of those over-target requests for the departments, and you try to, you know, use, uh, those years, I don't know what that message is here, but to play catch-up. But in this year, we have 5.78% is the projected valuing, valuation increase, and, uh, just wanted to give you that overall 25-year look. So, I think that is all for right now, and I will take any questions.
Thank you, Lori, for the presentation. Again, we just have one agenda item during this budget meeting, which is item A, so we'll begin dialogue on this item. Uh, I'll start with Commissioners and go through at least one round, and then we'll include some public sentiment along the way for questions and further comments from public as well. So, with that being said, I will start with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Uh, thank you. And, um, for the reasons that I'm gonna state, I'm going to make a motion to lay this matter over for two weeks. This is a, uh, $636 million-plus budget, uh, that we got at 8 o'clock this morning. Um, there's virtually nobody here from the public, um, and even if you were, good luck reading There's virtually nobody here from the public, and even if you were, good luck reading that between then and now. The idea that each commissioner will have 10 or 12 minutes to go over this document that we received a few hours ago is a pretty big stretch. The Finance Committee has held no public hearings on this over-half-a-billion-dollar budget, and the briefings that they had with selected members of the board, I was not briefed by the Finance Committee, but consisted of a circumvention of the Open Meetings Act. They did that so that they wouldn't have to publish a meeting with the County Board as the Finance Committee, and therefore, nobody from the public were allowed to attend those briefings. The 10 to 12 minutes that we'll have, I'll try to use as best I can, but I think for all of those reasons, and the fact that we don't have a full board here today, it would behoove the public to have a period of time to digest this document, more than the couple hours that those lucky enough to be in this room have actually had. And so, I would propose that two-week layover for this matter to come up at our regularly-scheduled meeting at that time.
And Commissioner Kavanaugh, I think you technically should motion for one or three weeks because we don't meet in two weeks.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I think you should motion for one or three weeks because we don't meet in two weeks. We're off.
Okay, three weeks.
Okay. So, Commissioner Kavanaugh's motion to delay the budget's approval for three weeks, if I'm understanding your-
That's correct.
-motion correctly. Is there any second for that motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, we, we are in the public hearing now, correct? Or have we, were you?
Yeah, we're in the public hearing now. Public hearing is now open, yes.
Well, we'd have to-
We have to close the public hearing.
For any motions.
For that motion. All right. Technically, we cannot take the motion because we're still in the public hearing, that is correct. So, we'll get all the dialogue first, and we'll circle back to your motion.
Okay. Then I have a few more questions.
Okay. Are we running the clock?
As long as Lori's here. I'm using this number, which isn't like right up front, but I think it's right. The budget is 636,568,16. And if you exclude ARPA from that number, it is 584,372,850. Is that-
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, you know, we're, depending on where you put ARPA, you know, well over a half-a-billion dollars. And I appreciate all the work you've done on this. You and I have had multiple discussions, one-on-one on this, and I think I understand the process that got you to the numbers that you're recommending today. I'm not really talking about that, I'm just trying to make sense for myself and for the public of this overall budget process. So, I'm looking at, and I'm, I'm just taking this from a couple of documents of the same, but have different, slightly different information in them, but I want to thank you for that. I'm looking at the Health Center and the Community Health Centers' requested budgets, which if you deduct the amount of non-Douglas County money, that's Medicare and Medicaid primarily from it, their requested budgets go from 48 million in the case of the Health Center to 12 million.
Right.
And for the Mental Health Center, they go from 23 million to 11 million. So, those are big, big subsidized, the two biggest subsidized categories that we have.
10 seconds.
That's it?
10 seconds, go ahead.
See, the problem, and we get five to seven more minutes to talk about this half-billion-dollar item.
Thanks.
I'll come back, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mr. Chair, can I check the audio for a second?
Okay, checking the audio.
Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Thanks, all good.
Okay, looks good. Let me go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Lori, I may go down a road here, and you feel free to stop me and correct me if you'd like. Commissioner Kavanaugh made some decent points. We've actually, he and I are both fairly, oh, how would you say, opinionated, and, and we believe in the directions that we're going, so, as do most of the other commissioners, but he and I get a little animated at times. What I would say is, in regard to that animation, there, we pull ourselves back, me included. There's a process that we have that dictates a requested budget and a 3% target.
Right.
Any function, and this is not 30, 40, 50 years old, but it's a process that's been in place for a while. Any function or department that met that 3% target, the department has appropriated the amount based on the existing procedural status. So, we don't force them to come up, if they, if they're within that 3% target, as long as I've been here, maybe, maybe even as long as Commissioner Kavanaugh's been here, they get that amount without a whole lot of fanfare. Further, any department or entity coming in over the 3% target has to come in, there's a case made in an open meeting. All of them had to come in. Anybody that missed that 3% target were forced to come in, in an open meeting, and make that case. And they, and they would have to provide, and that was mostly done in May and June, but they have to provide their reasoning. Further, if that entire process, if, if all of this, and I'm not saying he's wrong, I'm saying if that entire process requires change, according to the will of this board, if that process that's in place requires change, then we go into the fall by driving the change in process. You want to do this right now, today, based on a process that I'm only, I've known it for five years, this is the process we've had? I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying, now we want to change it, today? What are we going to do in the next two weeks? We had a little bit of a conversation off to the side. What are we going to do in the next two weeks to actually change this process? I'm curious. Anything?
It's a rhetorical.
Hold a public, hold a public meeting? Yes, it is. Hold a public meeting? Okay. Based on history, this process is not necessarily subverting that directive, the directive that we have, the way we're supposed to approach this. The Finance Committee is not obligated, the way we sit right now, the Finance Committee is not obligated to hold hearings on all department asks. We're not. We can change that, but right now, the way it sits, we are not. If the board does not wish this existing process to continue, call it an interim, call it whatever, we go in and we make those changes based on the majority, on a majority vote in this board. Nobody's done that. Nobody's come up to me over the last four months and said, we need to change this process. By the way, nobody in public has done that either. Part of the reason that we don't have appropriations hearings, like the legislature does, 64 of the 91 functions we provide, 64 of the 91 services that the county provides are mandated by the state or the feds. We have to do it. We don't have any choice. That's not the way it is with the legislature. We've, we've all been down there, we've all watched them, that's not the way it is. They have a full appropriations process by state law, and they also don't have the type of hindrances, you'd think they would, but they don't. They don't have the type of mandated hindrances that we have. Finally-
Sorry, that's time.
I got one more point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we can circle back. I'll take a quick round on my end. As mentioned by Commissioner Friend, you know, the justifications meetings did happen in late May and early June, where each department had to come here, give their reasoning justification for wanting to have a request over target. Everyone had their PowerPoints, it was done in public here. So, this is the second time around that we're talking about the budget at a public meeting to discuss now the updated recommendations from Finance Committee, which tie back to those justifications that we talked about in public in late May, early June. And so, here we are, having that budget meeting. Big picture, as far as what Lori went through, in regards to, you know, assessments being lower, you know, they were pretty good three years ago, decent last year, lower this coming year. And we started without, if every department came in at target, like Lori said, we'd be at a negative 500,000, about, negative half-million. So, not the best starting point, not the worst starting point, but also not the best starting point. If we were to accept these recommendations from Finance Committee today on allowing some overage over target for the reasons given by Lori, and also building upon the reasons that every department gave when they came for their justification meeting, then we would be eating about 2.5 million of revenue we don't necessarily have, but we would insert some reserve funds to eat that deficit, so to speak, for this upcoming fiscal year from the reserve. And given that our reserve is, is not huge, I don't love the fact that we're going into reserve just to cover even the basic budget that we might approve today, or whenever it is, because we want to be fiscally healthy, and also think about the future as a trajectory, right? Three years from now, five years from now, in regards to hopefully building our reserve, not actually decreasing our reserve, considering it's not huge. Also, maintaining ourselves at a budget that's incrementally increasing, that, that's sustainable, if hopefully the economy stays decent, but that's always up for question as well. And so, you know, for this year, I could be in favor of just kind of eating that 2.5 million through reserve, hoping that upcoming years, you know, we can kind of taper those over-target requests and kind of be at a, at a zero-wash, hope, you know, ideally, where we're able to come in at target, the economy's doing fine enough that assessments are about where we need them to be to sustain our budget moving forward. So, on my end, again, I don't love the fact that we'd go 2.5 million into our reserves, even for these recommendations, but I could be in support of it this year. However, if next year, and the year after, and the year after, we're having to, okay, we're going to need 2 million more from reserves, maybe 3 million from reserves, that's where I'm going to say, okay, red flag, we're having to go into reserves every year in the 2, 3 million. That's probably not sustainable, especially since our reserve is not huge. So, that's kind of where I'm at, at the moment, with a slight yellow light of caution, but something we could do this year potentially, and see how upcoming fiscal years come out in regards to the, the financial picture. That is my quick two cents at the moment. Let me go to Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you. So, in, in the past, and I know we don't have to do things how we've always done it, but in the past, I just want to reiterate what I said last year during budget, and that was after everybody came forward and told us whether they could or couldn't make their budget, the ones that couldn't came forward, and then after we got all that information, we had, I'll call it, a budget retreat, where the full board sat down with finance folks, the public was invited, the public spoke at some of them, where we actually debated the budget. And I think we need to go back to that, as I said, last year and the year before. So, I'm asking again that we reinstate that, because I think that that will help as we have these conversations, rather than just trying to have them two-on-two, and, not that messengers aren't giving us the correct information, but it, some translations get lost, and I just think it's good for the full board to have those discussions, easy, hard, whatever discussions, as we move forward. So, I would ask that we do that. And if I, I guess have to put an agenda item on the board to, to do that, I will, but I'm just asking that we do that. And then, Lori, there, I don't see it anywhere in the budget documents, but where do we show the dollars that we are bringing in from cash vest 3+1?
I don't think I have that specifically noted in the budget document. It's a little bit tricky at this point, because they had recommendations about investing certain amounts here, so I don't know how much you attribute after a certain amount of time to their recommendations, because a lot of it is market increases, rate adjustments, it's hard to quantify specifically, you know?
Well, I guess just a historical page would be helpful to put in there, because I think the public needs to know, the taxpayers need to know, that we're out there trying to find other means of revenues-
Yes.
...besides property taxes, and this is one of them. And so, almost $10 million over a five-year period, that's pretty darn good, I think. And again, it's helping the taxpayers.
From investing, yeah, funds for the recommendation, yeah.
And, I mean, just, even the interest we gained on 50 million of ARPA dollars, you know, we wouldn't have had that if we didn't invest, that, even if it was short-term, we, we made over a half-a-million dollars in interest on that. So, I guess I'm asking again that that be put as a separate page, so, one, the board completely understands the revenue, but again, for the taxpayers, because historically, and then to date, I think it's helpful for them to see that the board is looking at things besides just using their property taxes-
Right.
...for our revenues.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgson. All commissioners that have turned on lights have had at least their first round. I do want to mix in some public sentiment and any other departments that have come to speak today to have an opportunity as well, and then go back to commissioners' second and final rounds. So, anybody from the public wanting to speak on the budget presentation? Includes all departments in the budget, yeah, all departments.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tamika Meese. I am the Executive Director of North Omaha Community Partnership. Our address is 2406 Fowler Avenue, Suite 312. I'm here today as someone who advocates daily for the well-being of our youth and families, and for a public safety approach rooted in accountability, transparency, and community empowerment. I have voiced opposition in the past to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Special Operations Group, and I stand by that opposition today. But at the same time, I want to acknowledge that not everything within the DCSO is cause for concern. There are steps being taken in the right direction. I believe in fairness and recognizing progress. I want to commend the DCSO for hiring a youth and family engagement specialist, someone from our community with lived experience, who understands the people she serves, and that kind of representation builds trust and makes a difference. This person brings understanding and connection that cannot be taught in training. This is a meaningful investment. Also want to highlight the partnership between DCSO and Metropolitan Metropolitan Community College. Together with them and Minister Sunyada Menelik, they developed a program supporting youth and young adults on probation. This offers them access to career development, job training, and educational opportunities. This is a genuine alternative to the cycle of incarceration. It's the kind of programming that gives people a chance to choose a different path. Additionally, I appreciate that DCSO and Sheriff Hanson has agreed to the reduction of its initial budget proposal. This shows a willingness to respond to community concerns and be mindful of how public dollars are spent. But with that acknowledgement comes responsibility. I urge this board to ensure that the funds allocated in this budget are used exactly as they are intended. No backdoor reallocations, no silent shifts to enforcement-heavy tactics, or redirecting to strategies that don't serve our community. If we're going to fund prevention and engagement, let's make sure that actually happens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tamika. Appreciate it. Others from the public on the budget?
Doug Kagan, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Despite expectations that the county would make public, as previously done, detailed information about the future year budget ahead of the budget hearing, we received such information only Monday afternoon. Therefore, it was impossible for taxpayer watchdogs to analyze the budget in detail to find waste- to find waste, inefficiencies, and duplicative expenditures. Also impossible to discover positive elements in the budget. Thus, we can comment only on the information now released to the public or that we ourselves found. We suggest that in the future, the county administration post-budget information online in a timely manner or require each department to do so. The property tax rate will not increase. However, with an estimated 5.8% increase in total county assessed property values, property owners with a valuation hike will pay more property tax. The general fund budget of 295.9 million is only 3.5% higher than the previous modified budget, but higher than 3% Midwest Urban Consumer Price Index for the 12 months ending in June 2025. Comprehensive budget cutting could trim this 3.5%. So, we offer the following suggestions for budget cuts to non-mandated services, and they're enumerated there. Although the Sheriff's Department budget was over the target amount, we support this budget in its entirety, particularly because the department is one of the highest revenue enhancers. Because of the increase in crime in the county, we believe that the county should balance these budget increases in law enforcement, prosecution, and incarceration by eliminating or downsizing other services. By our calculations, the county could earn over $1 million annually by housing in the county jail criminal... Excuse me. Criminal illegal aliens awaiting deportation. This option definitely would help balance the budget. We found suspicious that the General Assistance Department expenses would increase, though the number of clients dropped and it did not spend all of its current appropriations. And as was put on the overhead there, they asked for more money over the target, but yet they didn't spend all their current appropriations. With employee benefits increasing by 7%, we suggest that employees pay a larger percentage of this cost. Again, we were sorely disappointed that taxpayers had so little time with which to analyze the budget before the public... Before the public budget hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. As a quick point of information, Lori, can you describe what are the publishing requirements for this budget meeting and the budget?
It has to be... Oh, thank you. Lori Persch, Budget and Finance Director. The budget has to be published a week prior in, or maybe it's five business days, I can't remember, in the daily record. Do you happen to remember the date it was actually published? But it was published at least a week prior. Do you have it? But we had...
Dan Esch, County Clerk. It was July 23rd was when the budget notice was published in the daily record.
Thank you, Dan. So, July 23rd and today is the 29th. So, that notice would be out there in public record.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, something additional, or are you good?
Well, I think what Mr. Kagan was referring to was the PDF slideshow. I'm not sure that that was out there until yesterday, so...
Got it. Others from the public or departments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Douglas County Sheriff Aaron Hanson. I just wanted to step up and just state for the record. Number one, we do appreciate the arduous task that this board has in navigating these very complicated budget decisions, and we do, we respect the processes that you engage in. In terms of the requested budget from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office compared to the pending budget, which is set to be approved, it will create challenges for the Sheriff's Office. It will create challenges in our ability to uphold our statutory mandates. Many of the things we've talked about here earlier that Finance Director discussed, the growth of the District Court, there's a correlation to the Sheriff's Office when it comes to the growth of the District Court. We're seeing a massive increase in our civil process procedures and other statutory obligation of the Sheriff's Office in order to keep our court system moving in an efficient way. The population of unincorporated Douglas County is growing faster than the population of the city of Omaha. It is one of the fastest-developing areas in the nation, and so far, we've done a good job of preventing crime, investigating crime, stopping crime in the county. But the challenges persist, and although I think your proposed budget increase has 2.2% increase for the Sheriff's Office, by our math, it's actually 2.5. So, we appreciate that the growth is higher than 2.2. Historically, the Sheriff's Office has grown at a rate of anywhere from 4.5% to 5% per year, for good reason. The challenges grow. The obligations grow, and especially, the technology needs grow. And so, we will struggle with this proposed budgetary amount that is pending to be approved by the board, but we do appreciate the arduous task of getting to this point. We just believe there's more discussion to be had in the future about prioritization of our precious property tax dollars that we all rely on to provide these crucial services to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Appreciate it. Others from the public?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I know it's not easy probably for you people to not lose sight of the public interest, but you do supposed to represent and work for us, not the other way around. And in this county, in this city, there really is no private property. We do not own our homes. We actually lease it. Because you and the city can come and take our property, or assess it, or do whatever you want with it at any time. So, that basically says that I don't own my property. I lease. We don't have a say in a lot of things. You've lost the big picture on things, and I'm tired of you complaining that the state makes you do this. No, the state doesn't make you do a lot of this. You have independent abilities to hand out money to anybody for anything, and apparently you've gone overboard, and you've gone looking for money with ARPA, federal funds that are going to disappear, federal grant monies that are going to disappear, and then you're going to have to apologize to an awful lot of people. But you can't even handle the homeless situation here in Omaha. Nobody talks about the Walnut Hill District and the Dundee District between Coming and Hamilton along the Northwest Radio Highway. It is the absolute pits. Some of it is probably out-of-state owners of apartment buildings that have given up, probably stopped paying taxes and vacated the building, and the homeless have moved in, and they've broken out windows, and they're all boarded up. They're now hanging their clothes on the fence behind the old Megasaver at Hamilton and Saddle Creek. They bring in their own furniture and have a little... Every day. This is not the city park down on Coming Street. This is right by the Megasaver, right in that area where there's a lot of broken-in two buildings. I see no law enforcement. I see no county there. They were on the news for vacating some homeless camps the other day, but never there. And excuse me, I live close to that district. Public safety is a matter here. This is encroaching on my side of Northwest Radio, which is Dundee. Vacant lot there, used to be a car dealer. Oh, daily, people are selling goods out of their cars. They even put tents up next to the clothing dumpsters where people can donate. They do whatever they want, because they don't want to live downtown and go by the rules. But they're a problem, and they're a safety issue. There've been houses on fire because people break in and do what they want to do, and they catch on fire. Not too far off of Coming Street and about 40th. But anyway, the big picture is, you're supposed to work for us. So, don't go spend programs with money from ARPA. Do you not know that that's going to go away? Federal funding funds for... This stuff is going to go away. Unfortunately, you've already done a lot of that with ARPA funds, that it's going to go away. We didn't authorize you to take ARPA funds and let businesses build new infrastructure. That's not what the health crisis was all about. So, why did you do it? Because it was a run for the money. Run for the money, that's going to disappear. So, there are some things that you ought to do for the big picture, is to remember that we're a republic, we're not a democracy, we're not a socialist government.
30 seconds.
More transparency, but start by cutting TIF, cutting the property taxes by cutting TIF. Cut the exemptions such as for Islamic centers, which is antithetical to the United States Republic, we're a Christian-based country. October, whatever, third or fourth, a couple of years back, I protested property tax exemptions...
10 seconds.
...for an Islamic center, and you guys went after me for that, as being Islamophobic. You are out of control, folks. You need to get back to listening to the people. Thank you.
That's time, and for the record, one of our beloved constitutional freedoms is freedom of religion. All right, we'll take more comment from the public.
Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street, Omaha 68164. Had a couple of... One question related to, I guess it's a couple of different parts of a question, related to property taxes. On Page 1 and 2, you can see what the levy is, 29059, it's been the same last few years. Page 6 and 7, where it talks about source of revenue and summary revenue, it says that the expected revenue is 195 million. And then the last page, or not the last page, but Page 8, taxable valuation. Comment, I'd like to see you guys delay the vote till the 19th, because that valuation hasn't been certified, it probably won't be certified by then, by the county assessor, but you might have a better idea of what that'll come in at. What I did, the question I have, if you take that taxable valuation and apply the levy to it, you get 214 million, but the source of revenue from property taxes is saying it's 195 million. So, I was wondering if somebody could explain the discrepancy there?
Yeah, I think that you have to take into account, there's some BOE protests, and also that 190 or 195, you have to add like some other pieces to that, like OPBD payment in lieu, and some other pieces to get to that total 214. But again, we won't have the whole... The whole assessed value will be certified, like you said, on the 20th, and then there will be, you know, there's the Board of Equalization protest as well prior to that.
Okay, so, you're saying that there's going to be another several million dollars in addition to the 195 to get to the 214 from other sources?
Yes. Well, it's all part of the property tax, the tax piece of the revenues, and then there's the departmental receipts and other pieces as well.
There's $18 million difference between the two?
Yes. I can do a reconciliation of that and walk you through that after, would that be helpful? Okay.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert. I'll make sure Lori follows up with you on that. I do want to recognize a hand on Zoom. Mr. Sherman Lamont? Sherman, are you on? Otherwise, we'll circle back. Okay, let's circle back. Anybody else in the chamber wanting to speak on the budget topic during this public hearing? If not, I'm going to circle back to commissioners at this point. I do have a couple of lights, going back to Commissioner Kavanaugh for a second four-minute round.
Thank you. I think it's, should be pretty clear based on this brief discussion of a $636 million budget, that the budget process, if you want to call it a process, is broke, and we should fix it. I have, oh, I don't know, a half hour's worth of questions here, real questions about real dollars that will affect real people and their property tax bill, that we're not going to get to today, because I have 12 minutes to talk about $636 million worth of public expenditures. We need to fix this before we go forward again. I can't vote for a budget that's a pig in a poke like this. Nobody from the public was really even aware of this. Our public information officer sent out no media advisory to anyone to show up, and so we have less than a half dozen citizens commenting. We have one elected official commenting, and frankly, if you think this is a transparent system, you haven't been following the $636-plus-million bouncing ball very closely. You need to, because it's our money, and all of us have to pay this $636 million bill this year. I think, you know, the proposal to lay this over for three weeks can only allow us to read these documents and ask these questions. If we don't, they won't be asked and answered, and if you think that's a reasonable way to run a $636 billion public entity, I think that you should probably take another look at that. No public hearings, no opportunity to question department heads or elected officials, no open meetings, and 10 to 12 minutes for each of us to go over a document that we've had less than 24 hours to review. We need all the commissioners here for this, and we need to put the cart before the horse, which is, our revenues have yet to be determined, and we're going ahead despite that, and, okay, $636-plus-million expenditures. You know, this is in large part predicated on what is perceived as a 5.8% increase in our property tax revenues, but even those numbers would be subject to question if we had the time, because if you go into these documents, you see the numbers laid out here for 5.8% increase do not equal the numbers that we were given for a 5.8% increase. I just did the math on that with my handy calculator here, and we're off millions of dollars just in that calculation. So, if we're going to make assumptions, it's really kind of troubling that we don't make assumptions based on information that we can't even question. My friend and colleague, Mr. Friend, says, "Nobody came to me regarding changing this process." Well, I did, and most recently, I would just remind him, at Louis M.'s Burger Last last Thursday...
30 seconds.
...where we had burgers and talked exactly about changing this process. It's something that I think everybody recognizes. It's just a matter of, do you want to fix it or not? We have an opportunity going forward to fix this. I think we could easily take three weeks to at least initiate that. I think we could easily take three weeks to at least initiate that discussion and answer some of these questions. And so I'm renewing my motion to lay this over for three weeks to allow some of that to begin and no harm, no foul, everybody can come back. The public might actually be aware that this is going on by three weeks from now. They're certainly not aware of it now and I think, you know, it could only do good to allow that transparency to occur. I don't know where I am on time, Mr. Chairman.
That's time, yeah, that's time.
Thank you.
We'll circle back to that motion after we close the public hearing. Let me capture Commissioner Friend and then I'm going to go to you, Sherman. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, Commissioner Kavanaugh, thanks for the burger. I've talked to everybody, I appreciate it.
That was a cheeseburger, but go ahead.
It was excellent. We did have that dialogue. I didn't mean to impugn, you know, the whole idea that I haven't had discussions about this, but again, it was a week ago. It wasn't four months ago. I mean, this, this type of stuff isn't, is stuff that we can dialogue through and work through. I don't, I'm not in a position, I don't disagree with him, Commissioner Kavanaugh. The big thing is what can you, and I laid this out earlier and I wasn't done. What, what can you, it's always lessons for our children, right? Focus and worry about the stuff that you can control and what you can't control. We do have control over our process and maybe we need to make some enhancements. That I'm not necessarily arguing, but I'm not sure anybody's listening to me. 75% of what we're doing, we can't control. If my daughter was listening, she'd say, stop yelling. I, 75%, this is the unique part of, and I've said this from I've got, from the time I got here. And people can march up here and say, well, you have control, you're not listening to us, you have control, you're not listening to us. I know what our control is, I know what our statutory authority is. When the legislature tells us we have to pay for a sheriff's office, we pay for it. If the sheriff doesn't like it, the amount that we pay for, he might say, I don't like it. Do you realize of all the departments that came in over budget, over the 3%, all are public safety related, arguably, all of them, every one, all but one are mandated? And I'm talking about GAO, right? That's public safety related. They're helping people. And the bottom line, they're helping them at times stay out of trouble. That's the only one that's not mandated. All the rest that came in over budget to the tune of $9 million, we have to do. We don't have any choice. But our cash reserve is $9 million and the ask was approximately 7.5. Okay? We're going to gut our cash reserve to the tune of 1.5 left? No, I don't think so. A cash reserve of $9 million in a 600 million dollar budget ain't enough. We don't have enough now. Now we're gutting it even more. The existing process also makes, and here's what Commissioner Kavanaugh will agree with me on, this existing process makes it particularly difficult, oh, I don't have enough time, particularly difficult to analyze the difference between and the value add between a mandated and a non-mandated services. Can you consider this for a minute? Can you imagine if we brought the health center in here and started talking to them behind closed doors about how they're not mandated and we're going to get rid of them? Can you imagine that for just one second? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
They've been starting at three minutes, so you can actually go an extra minute if you want.
My extra three minutes?
Extra one minute if you want.
Commissioner Kavanaugh was next.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm well aware.
Are you allowing me?
No, I've noticed that the clock has been starting at three minutes, so you have an extra minute if you want it.
I'm sorry, I hear you. Okay, thank you. Look, again, can you imagine 10, to the tune, the health center is to the tune of $10 million. Commissioner Kavanaugh points out that we get federal and state funding for that. Yeah, we do. But do you know how much property tax we put into it? Approximately 10 million. That's not mandated, folks. We don't have to do it. But can you imagine for one second if we brought them in here and said, no, we're going to outsource it or we're going to get rid of it? Well, we're not kicking 250 people out on the street, I'll guarantee that, but it's not mandated. That's where Commissioner Kavanaugh's point is valid. You want to start having these, you want to start having this analysis? You want to start talking about these things? The process does not allow for that. It doesn't. We have, we, since I've been here, we have not had one hearing on a non-mandated service as to whether it should exist or not exist. Not one. Now, do I think those open meetings, one second, those open meetings would help. I think, I think Commissioner Borgeson is right. I think an open meeting or a retreat would be quite valuable. I think we could get there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Lori has a burning point of clarification, then I'm going to hit Sherman and then I'll go to Commissioner Rogers. Lori, quick.
I just wanted to address his question earlier. So if you take the estimate of assessed times the levy, somewhere 212, 214 in there, again, just to be conservative, that variance of, let's say it's 18 million if you took the full 214, that's like 8%. So there's going to be some uncollectibles. We'd never collect 100% of the property taxes assessed in any given year. There's always slow payers or uncollectibles and others. So we, I always want to be a little bit prudent when I'm putting this budget together. I'm using the same templates that had been provided to me. And I think it's a good idea to not bank on that you're going to get 100% of, you know, total assessments times the levy value because you're just, in reality, you're not, you're never going to get that much cash flow in. So if you try to include that total amount when you're calculating your expenditures, you're going to fall short. So hopefully that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, Sherman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I do still have concerns with the sheriff's actual use of the money that they receive because as we've seen before, Aaron Hansen, he's lied about different things, especially with the deputy involved shooting where he said Deputy Rock performed lifesaving tactics on Janidi Ibrahim. When the family watched that video, which he blocked me from seeing even though the family requested I be there, they saw Jesse Rock pull that young man out the truck with his hands up and threw him to the ground and cuffed him. There was no lifesaving measures done contrary to Aaron Hansen's public statements. So at this point, I don't care what kind of community efforts he attempt. If he lied about the death of a young man or an attempt to save his life, he will lie about the money that he's getting and what he's going to use it for. And I know that his department is listed as public safety, but for North Omaha, it's more like public terrorism. And even with the work that he was doing with my cousin Sundiata Menelik as of late, he had started doing that work with Ron Hug and even snaked my cousin Sundiata out of the work that they were doing. So that's, that's my statement.
Thank you, Sherman. I'm going to go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say, you know, no process is perfect to some degree and, you know, there could be tweaks, but no, I just want to know for the record, I think even in the day when we were doing budgets, when we had the, the public meeting, when people that came in on budget was there, you still had people meeting in groups of twos to discuss specific concerns. So I just want to take offense, well, not offense, I want to note that there's no intentional, I think, method of trying to do anything to hide anything. I think everybody's been where they need to be insured, making sure everybody's come to the public. I know there's been extra means by commissioners over the years, particularly Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Friend when they've been here to make sure that that piece is public. So I want to say, I do want to thank them for listening to my concerns particularly. And I'm going to support the day just because it's not public, but it got to a point where I think it's reasonable for the compromise and they did hear where some of my concerns were. I do want to know for the record, though, to what Commissioner Friend did said about general assistance. General assistance is mandated to some degree. And what I mean is, and I want to put this on the record for the budget, for the finance director to look at, because my general concern in this is the question needs to be asked, how do you balance the fact that the statute says the county is the payer of last resort for general assistance? That's the mandated piece and the fact that we're now in a lead. And general assistance is not in the exempt piece, so I do want to put that on record here today of my concern because depending on how Medicaid flows down, how these changes happen, that will produce itself in county general assistance. And when the state, the voters decided that we wanted to be a Medicaid expansion state, that took money out of there that we used and put it to other places around the county in which it saved us throughout the years. I do put on, want to put on the record that the concern will be if healthcare coverage gets cut from the federal government, it will show up in the county's budget. And that's what I do want somebody to verify for me. How do you reconcile the fact that we're the payer of last resort by the state and statute? And then on this end, they put a cap on any and somehow I think that's going to press us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I'll take a quick round, actually, let me go to Commissioner Borgeson first.
Did you say me first?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. I understand what's being said about a layover, but that, that actually isn't going to do anything because we won't be getting together as a board and that's my beef about all of this. So that we're, we haven't had those discussions as a board in full. And the other thing is there's, and I won't ask you this on the fly, but you know, these are questions I would have, is our encumbered funds from 23 to 25 went up almost $15 million. And so the question is, we're encumbering funds, we're encumbering them for a three-year period. I think we as a board need to talk about that policy and the amount of money that's being encumbered and, and just again, a good explanation of what it really is and how it works and how we monitor it and, and all of that. So that's, that's just another thing that I think if we again had a budget retreat like we did in the past, we would be able to have those conversations in a much more thorough and productive, in my opinion, way. This isn't, this isn't a productive conversation for a budget, in my opinion. And I think that back and forth needs to happen with our board members. And, and so, anyway, but laying it over, that isn't going to, to help any. I actually pushed when I first got on this board for us to approve a budget before our fiscal year started because we were spending money before we actually even approved it, which is actually what's happening right now. The law is, what's the problem is because of the dates that they put in there for what's certified and then when we can actually approve it by, but it makes no sense, no sense operationally in, in doing it the way that the law says it's supposed to be done. So we did change. We did change to have it approved at the end of June at the latest beginning of July. I think we should still hold that and I think that we should again have those conversations as a full board as we move forward in our budgeting process over the, over the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Morgan, did I see you hit your button?
Well, I appreciate all the comments and I do thank Lori for her work. And when it's said here that there hasn't been any public discussion, I don't know where some of the commissioners might have been when we've had those departments that were over the target number come right here to our meeting as was stated by our chairperson. We listened to them. And as far as having a retreat, I totally agree. And I'm going to yield to Mary Ann, who advises, when a good time and Lori would be to have that retreat and invite the public and have all the discussions we want and invite the departments to be there too, to discuss it. And, you know, I'm maybe out of touch, but you know, I don't like having anyone called a liar. And I don't appreciate, and I'm not trying to defend the sheriff, I'm appreciative of his work, but I don't like the statements made of that, period. It's just not respectful and it's not called for or accurate. Everyone here, and one of the things I appreciate about our people that work in the county city is they really try to do the very, very best job they can. And Lori, because you happen to be at the microphone, I know that sometimes it's not a very appreciative job by some, but I do thank you deeply for your work and effort and your experience. So those are just a couple of thoughts and we'll work, Mary Ann Borgeson, Commissioner, to figure out the right timing for that retreat and we'll do it. And I share the view that delay this two or three weeks is not the appropriate thing to be doing. And I stand to be corrected always by you, Lori. So if you say, yeah, that would be helpful, I'm with you on whatever you think.
No, I, I concur. I don't know that a whole lot will get accomplished in the next, you know, by delaying it two or three weeks. I do think that if the finance committee and the finance chairs are amenable to the budget retreat, that might be a good idea to do in the plans for next year's budget so that we can make sure everybody feels like they've had adequate time and they've heard, you know, what their colleagues are thinking about which departments should be increased, decreased, and the departments can show up as well. So we can certainly, I'll work with the finance committee to make that happen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you, Lori. I'll take a second round real quick. Yeah, procedural suggestions, constructive feedback are always welcome from fellow board members and from public and partners. Like the retreat idea, it's a good idea. Probably I'm imagining some time between justification presentations and the public hearing that we're having today, maybe somewhere in the middle might work out, but something to be, you know, fleshed out a little later. But, you know, it's a valid idea. Apparently it's been done in the past, something to bring back into the present. Asking for the PowerPoint to maybe be released a little sooner, you know, we know when we published the budget a week ago, we could strive to try to also get the, you know, the next Tuesday's presentation PowerPoint a little sooner out there. It's a valid request, valid suggestion. But I don't think saying we have, we don't, we didn't get the information on the budget till this morning or till yesterday, I don't think that is accurate, correct in any way. I mean, we are part-time employees of the county that should be investing time to read what's given to us on a weekly basis and spend time, you know, gathering whatever information we think we need for upcoming meetings. And so what is the main substance of debate today? It's, you know, the over-target request and the proposal on what we should fund in relation to those over-target requests. And the, and those are based on the justification meetings in May and June that we had and those came with PowerPoints and numbers, hard numbers to look at and debates and, you know, consider when we got those in late May, early June. So it's all based on that information, what we have here today, the proposal from finance committee. So to ask for more robust conversation is one thing and a valid, you know, request, but to say we didn't have this information till today or yesterday is not, I believe, an accurate statement. So again, procedures can always be improved in any organization and I'm just trying to distinguish what is constructive versus not accurate, in my opinion. So I will be supporting passage of the budget today if my colleagues so desire to move in that direction after we close the public hearing. With that being said, let me look at other lights. We're going to go into third rounds at this point. Is there anybody else from the public, from departments or from Zoom that want a chance to chime in on the budget hearing before I go to third rounds for commissioners?
Can I speak on that again?
You already had your round, Larry. All right. Okay, in that case, I'm going to go to third rounds. Third rounds are two-minute rounds, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
We've had public input from fewer people per $100 million than there are in the We've had public input from fewer people per $100 million than there are in this $636 billion budget. So there is no public input. We need to do the public's business in public. We get paid to do this business. The targets, not set in public, no public discussion of that. The budgets of everybody who didn't read, reach their target, no public discussion of that. The finance committee charged with doing this, no public hearings to discuss this budget. And so, good luck, everybody. You're getting a $636 million budget based on about a half hour or so of conversation with input from, I think it was four members of the public and one on Zoom. This can't help but be a bad budget with waste. I'm sorry to say that because I want to do this as well as we can, as inexpensively as we can, and that's not happening here today. I won't vote for this budget because it's a pig in a poke. The system's broke. We need to do the public business in the public and fix it. All that is, is our job. I don't want to go on retreats. I want public finance committee hearings. We need to just do our legal obligations here and we will do a better job. We can do a better job with less expenditure if we do our job. This can only result in waste and inefficiency and I'm not going to support that. I think we've had some discussions about going forward of what we could do. My colleague, Mr. Friend and I, I think, have broad agreement on certain elements of this. And he points out that, you know, 25% of this is all that we have discretion on. Well, that's $159 million. So if that's all we have discretion on, so be it. Let's talk about that. Let's fix this broken process. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend, two-minute round.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two minutes. Again, to Commissioner Kavanaugh's point, no public input. You could make the argument, and I'm not making it, but one could make the argument or I could debate with myself, that certain times people elect folks like us to actually represent and do things that they're not going to have an opportunity to do. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're speaking always for the public if there's no public input, but it means we have to make decisions. I hope people realize we do all kinds of things that aren't necessarily out in public. Let me give you an example real quick. Next week, we're actually, Commissioner Morgan pointed this out, 48, 4900 people protested their assessments, their assessed value of their property. Do you know how many of those protests I've heard? Anybody, that's rhetorical. None. None. And Commissioner Morgan brought up the point, well, come on, everybody come on into that Board of Equalization meeting that we're having next week. All 4800 people? All right. You see where I'm going with this? We're going to make a decision next week and we might get input from maybe 10 or 12 people, maybe. Maybe. Well, is that fair? Should we change that process too? So I want people to remember when we go into the Board of Equalization next week and folks show up and they make their argument and I decide to actually change it or I make a motion to change what a particular individual wants, are we deviating from the process? Should we stop? I bet other commissioners look at me funny when I actually do that. I'd like to know what we should do. Should we abdicate our authority if it's not in public? I don't think so. I think we actually have to make decisions. Under these circumstances, right now, today, until we change the process that's been given to us, this is what we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this is my last time and, again, I don't agree with what Commissioner Kavanaugh said in terms of the budget. It became a budget in a roundabout way that I may not agree with, but there was work being done. And I don't want to make the finance people and both staff and commissioners think that I don't think they've done the work because they have. I just would prefer to have more input as a commissioner in the budget. The public input, I can tell you from being on this board, I was the one who invited the public and got them to the table. They wouldn't have that if I wasn't the one who did it. So they came to the table because of me and they've been there every year because of me, that we have been able to give their input. We had more this year because there was a specific issue with a specific office that people had issues with and we wanted to hear from them and we did. So public input, but over the years, we've changed our budget from afternoon to evening to out in the districts. Nobody comes. And it does make me sad that nobody comes, but that's the reality of our process. Nobody comes to the budgeting process, to our public hearings, but it is, it is beneficial for us as commissioners to be around a table with each other to talk about our budget. So I know I sound like a broken record, but again, I've asked for this for the last three years. I'm asking for it again. I hear that you guys think that it might be a good idea. I'm hoping that we do this next year because that's what's needed. With all the other work that's being done, we as commissioners need to hear from each other all at one time.
Thank you. We're going to go to Commissioner Rogers. This is actually a four-minute second round for him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to build off what's been said and say that, you know, a point was made that to have a public hearing would discover waste and things that are in the budget. I'd like to say to the public, of any entities around here that doesn't have waste in their budget, I'd have to say it is not only this county government, probably county governments all over the state. That's why there was such a big uproar about this lead and the fact that, you know, you're putting this lead on people and I don't think the county has been out of realm in its spending. What the public needs to know is, what I was taught when I first got my education on this budget is that county budget comes in every year at a structural 3% to 4% deficit. So basically, depending on what you're at, and it was noted in the presentation, there were years where we came with the assessments were at zero and we ate that for the public. So note that it runs lean. And the public should know the precedent, it's not unprecedented for the county's route that it went not to here, departments that weren't, that met their goal. That's not unprecedented. When we have the truth in taxation meeting here for the county, the state doesn't have a county, a governmental entity that doesn't meet their goal, come here and present. So it's consistent. It's more efficient with time and, you know, I don't know what a dog and pony show does for somebody that's had the discipline and took the effort to make their budget. So I want to, you know, again, thank people for considering the process for next year. I've been in both. There's benefits to both and I look forward to it. But the main thing I want to reiterate is that this is not some process that's been done with secrecy and definitely without consideration of the dollar to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. You're good? Okay. Anybody else on the board that still has rounds? Otherwise, anybody else from the public in regards to the budget presentation? The public hearing is still technically open, but I'm going to close it in a minute if there's no more comment. If no further comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. As a courtesy, I will circle back to Commissioner Kavanaugh's desired motion to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I motion goes to lay over the budget for three weeks for further analysis and discussion so that members of the board can reach out to department heads and elected officials with questions that they may have. I have, I guess, dozens, based on the fact that we've had this document for less than 24 hours. I don't think that's a surprise. We're not doing our job unless we do our budget as carefully and as inexpensively as possible. We are raising everybody's taxes by not doing that job and I'm not in favor of that. I think we can do better if we do our job and we have a budget that's been rigorously vetted so that individual departments, all of them, come and explain what they're doing with public money.
I just think a motion, Commissioner, not around the speech.
I'm just saying, that's the reason for this. We need to do a massive overhaul of our budget process to actually establish a budget process. There's no budget, public budget process here at all.
The motion is to
Three weeks would allow us to have
Delay budget approval
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
By three weeks by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Is there a second to delay by three weeks? Is there a second? If not, motion fails. Well, is there any other motions by the board? Motion to approve the budget presented and proposed, second by Morgan.
Motion passes five to one. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. That was the only item on this meeting's agenda for the budget meeting. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rogers to adjourn, second by Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 12:01 PM.
Thank you.